And he called me. While he called me like six thirty, he said he was asleep. All right, I guess we're gonna start then. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. The schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, and the Two River Times on February first, twenty twenty four. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice that had been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the meeting. Minutes of the meeting, so. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Conchessi.
Here.
Angela up here. Mr. Ryan. Mr. Porte.
Uh, here, sorry.
Dr. Lawford. Mr. Concella.
Here.
Mr. Shuvening.
Here.
And Mr. Leader.
Yeah, Mr. Leader is pending and he's en route, so we're gonna start with a couple of items, if you don't mind, Mr. Leader.
Yes, sir.
I didn't have much time as we get.
No trouble at all?
You do the salute. It don't have much, unfortunately. I wish I had more.
We have the salute plan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The salute plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Worst comes to worst.
Uh, minutes from the November fourteenth meeting.
There he is.
There he is. I saw no issues with the minutes. Uh, so I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the November fourteenth meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Porte.
Yes.
Mr. Concella.
Yes.
Mr. Shuvening.
Yes.
And Mr. Leader.
Option.
Okay, um, the only other thing I'll be just reading is the end of your question. Want to get it, want to do it? Do that at the end?
Uh, did you read, you read?
I read the whole bit.
Did you read, you read the, uh, the other introduction?
I don't have the other introduction.
All right, great. Let me read that just for the sake of reading.
I was looking for it. I could be shut up.
What's that?
The thank God you shut up. And we were going to go over the street. And it was remarkable. Christopher Ken, so.
Okay, before proceeding with the formal meeting, well, for, uh, for the record, you got me on, uh, that I shut up, already noted with an asterisk. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words, the applicants or experts in the audience about the role and authority of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authority is specifically set forth in the borough ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It's quasi-adjudicial in nature and the members of the board are only paid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not announce the borough land use laws and regulations. The borough council takes action. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the borough of Fairhaven. It's their responsibility of the borough code enforcement officer. This board deals with appeals for leads and requirements of the borough's land use laws for denial by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and土地 ordinances by satisfying certain required standards approved. The board has no authority to weave these requirements. For an approved is always upon the applicant, show that he or she is entitled to speak to the plaintiff. The applicant has proved that deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zone plan. Variants is related to the future use of the land are not intended to alter as remedy temporary during any personal situations. Can we not shield, please? You know, I'd like to get a series of copies made. I'd like you to have a copy of that. If I don't have a copy of that, I'll take mine back eventually, but we can do it and we can get back to it in January. Uh, okay, so we publicly announced that the, um, the goods matter is not gonna be heard tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, I understand. Can you use data for that? In case, it depends on whether there's notice. Uh, cause it's your question, right?
Yes, Chairman, uh, board members, good evening, Martin Higgins, the, um, unfortunately, um, Ms. Capone had a family medical emergency, so she was not able to join us this evening. We apologize for any inconvenience to the board. Uh, we'd ask that it please be carried. Um, I know the board meets on, uh, January ninth in twenty twenty five. However, I have a conflict that evening. I also know the board meets on February sixth when I have the Merta matter that evening, so I don't know if the Goods Matter might be able to be heard on Thursday, February sixth as well. I will be here coincidentally for the Merta matter.
Uh, so what do we have scheduled right now?
We have two other matters on the agenda, February sixth, the car matter and the Gill. Um, one's by Harvard that's coming back, all of those, uh, Ray Blatsky.
And what's on for January?
January, we just have to reorder with an opening for anything from tonight that would potentially.
Okay, um, so I don't have an objection to putting the Goods Matter on third for February, but I, you know, just depending on how things play out.
It would be fourth.
Fourth?
Because there's currently three, Merta, Park, and Gill.
Is there any way we can move anybody from here to January? Yes. Anybody request for the February meeting? No, no, they've noticed already.
We could, uh, I could reach out to Ray Blatsky and see if he wanted, but I'd be to one of those and manage.
What's scheduled for March?
Uh, apparently it's open.
Uh, Mr. Higgins, you can either sit in fourth for February and we'll see what's gonna happen. Um, you won't remember it if it's fourth, but if you're okay with the idea that things fall out and maybe there's an opening, otherwise it'll move to March.
As we've seen this evening, I saw last evening three matters in front of me and all moved and I moved up from fourth to first, so that's fine, Chairman. February sixth, please.
Okay. Uh, I'll make the motion to move the Goods Matter to the February sixth, twenty twenty five meeting without any obligation to renew.
Thank you, sir.
Wave, Tony.
Uh, speculation or extension time act, please?
We'll file that with the board secretary. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. R. Second.
Uh, Mr. Conchessi.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Concella.
Yes.
Mr. Shuvening.
Yes.
And Mr. Lehman.
Yes. All right, right, good one.
Uh, if I could just, just, the chair.
Yeah, please.
Just, just to straighten out, fairly tortured procedural history, but just the same, we did hear this back on July eleventh. Uh, substantial amount of testimony, then the matter was heard, carried several times and then heard again on October twenty first. Um, I understand that we have a couple of additional exhibits that I'd like to place on the record. And you, obviously, we continue to have jurisdiction over this matter. I would like to mark as A seven A plans that were revised from the architect, revised as of November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. ZB three, the, uh, CME report of the city of Rizzo. Um, July twenty nine, twenty twenty four. Uh, ZB four, uh, CME report, Director Truul, Portes, and step down. ZB four, CME report of November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, here with the signature of Jordan Rizzo. Our last marking in October, October twenty one, was A twelve. Initiations bringing us up to A twelve. Are there any additional evidence that you may have, want to offer that I haven't already read?
Uh, not at this time, Mr. Kovats. Uh, the architect may have some supplemental, um, exhibits that he's brought, but I'd like to lay a foundation for that relative to Mr. Rizzo's review letter.
Let me do this. Anybody will re swear everybody, just in case I don't recall who was.
Kevin Spink is our architect, yes.
Okay. And enjoy the. Only someone to put a testimony to give.
Two hours, right?
Before the board be the truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
I do.
Okay, and again, my instruction to you is, as always, um, before you start speaking, please call your name on the record, so you know you can identify your voice if we have to make transcripts. Um, I think that makes it a little loud. Sounds good. Back to you, David.
Chairman, I kindly recall board members that Mr. Spink had been qualified as an architect both the July and October hearings previously, obviously, he, uh, just been sworn. Um, while he's getting set up, um, I'll just preface, um, the comments to say that, uh, the board had asked that we take a very hard look at the, uh, whether or not there was truly a need for the FAR variance in this matter. We did take that hard look. We eliminated the FAR variance, the plans that are shown as exhibit seven A, in front of you reflect that there is no FAR variance. The majority of the other variances have been eliminated. Uh, that leaves just two variances, the variance for the, uh, front, uh, porch, filling in the front porch, uh, along the oak, uh, frontage, and then the existing parking along the Willow frontage. Um, I'll have Mr. Spink provide a little bit more detail with regard to his revised plans. Good evening, Mr. Spink.
Good evening. Uh, again, Kevin Spink, S P I N K, from Kansasani Associate Architects at twenty one dash zero zero two oh eight south in Fairland, New Jersey. Um, we have revised the elevations as discussed. I have, uh, new color renderings that I would like to, uh, present to the board, that you can actually see what the new house would look like.
Please do. Your mark. A thirteen.
Yep.
They have a D on them?
They do not. It's just two color renderings. Um, it is just a revised rendering from the previous renderings that we provided.
Thank you.
Okay, um, based on the last hearing, the last meeting, uh, was really looked at as, uh, how we could really, uh, reduce the size of the house to get us under the FAR. If we can turn our attention to the previous application, the previous drawings that we had, uh, just for one second, I'm just gonna show you what we cut off of the house. So it's easy to see, I highlighted it, so it makes it easier. And this is a comparison between what was previously presented and what's now showing as A seven A.
Can we just clarify, when, which you said previously, have we only seen a single set of drawings and this is now the second set, or were there?
This is the third set. Third set, yeah.
So this is what you presented the last time, not the original bunch?
That is correct, yep. And based on that, we looked at the middle, was trying to cut more off in the first floor on the, uh, left-hand side of the house. So we were able to chop off, uh, three foot nine off the side, the entire length of it, which is twenty, uh, twenty-two foot eleven, and cutting back in in this area, so we were able to take this whole section off, which added up to one hundred and seven point two square feet off.
And that's our, and that's existing right now, right?
That's existing, that is correct. We're taking an additional hundred and seven square feet off the first floor of the house. Um, currently, the house is at twenty-five feet four inches from the neighbor's house, uh, measured from corner to corner. So with us taking the three foot nine off, we're actually increasing our separation between the two houses, uh, to almost twenty seven.
On the new plan, the, the, the first floor says sixteen seventy-eight and the new first floor is fifteen twenty-two, that's more than a hundred and seven. Is that the, in total, is that the total?
The total that you're taking off?
That is correct. It's the total of a hundred and seven point two square feet that we're taking off on that side of the house.
It's actually fifteen twenty-two point three for the proposed first floor area. From sixteen seventy-eight.
You checking the total?
Fifteen twenty-two is what it was. And what it is, that's correct.
For the area of the first floor, it says fifteen twenty-two, the listing is W eight. It's more than.
The last, well, yes, because the, the sixteen seventy-eight, but in the last time, we did take off the first floor. The actual first floor was sixteen twenty-nine twenty-eight on the last application.
Cause you were removing part of the last time.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. I'm removing another hundred and seven.
Got you, thank you.
Okay, on the second floor, we're taking the entire side of the house off, the entire side that we were bumping out, weeded off. Then I put in the front elevation back two feet on two sections, so we're actually getting some more, uh, dynamic movement on the front elevation. And I'm removing another five foot six and a half inches off of the inside of the house, pulling it back. So ultimately, we're taking an additional two hundred and three point six off the second floor. So total, I've removed three hundred and ten point eight square feet, which gets us just under, uh, where we are, are required to meet for the FAR. In order to do that, we'll go to the new plans. In order to do that, first thing we did was we rotated the dining room, moved the closets from the side over to this side, so we were able to pull everything further into the dining room. I rotated the front stair ninety degrees, so it's actually rotating up into the house rather than, uh, wrapping along the sun. Now they will pull everything in from this side of the house. That's where we're gaining that three foot nine off that side of the house, and pull the, the whole screen in. We also removed the powder room from this side and made what was the bathroom, that was a private bathroom for the guest room, now it is a bathroom for the entire floor. So we lost the powder room, but we gained access to that bathroom. Uh, the guest bedroom now has access to it off the hallway instead. That was the crust of the first chair. The second floor, what we did again, we took off the entire side. I pulled the, uh, walk-in closet in, moved the primary suite to the corner and put the bathroom between the primary suite and bedroom number two. Um, again, the stair wrapping up allowed us to open up and get a nicer sized laundry room at the top of the house. And I switched, we want the closets around, so the two closets are at the end, the bathroom still stayed in the middle between, this is the jack and jill for the two bedrooms. Ultimately, we have now reduced the square footage. We've increased, um, the setbacks on the side of the house. Um, I believe the only variances that we're asking for now are the front porches, which we are expanding the existing non-performing of the front porch and just expanding it across the front of the house.
And that's a fill-in, right? That's a, is that a fair way to characterize that?
That is correct. Okay, just an extension, following the exact planes of where the exact current porch is, just extending it across the whole house.
How short is it now?
Short being depth?
No, how much width do we miss in there?
Okay.
Right now, we're gaining one foot two on porch on this side, and on this side, we'll be adding ten foot ten.
Ten foot almost.
Yeah, ten foot ten. So overall, we're adding twelve feet to the total porch, uh, across the whole front.
And that's to make it symmetrical?
That is correct, yep. And as you can see in the color rendering provided, it is, uh, it's a very nice look.
Sure.
Especially with the, the hip roof and keeping a nice dead roof on this porch, it really steps the house down to the ground and it makes it look smaller.
Is it, is it fair to say that if you didn't do that, that would not be a better aesthetic alternative?
Absolutely. It would not be as balanced, that's for sure.
I think it looks good. I, I, just my personal opinion, from the, from the rendering, I think it would be excellent. It's much more reduced in scale, I think it would.
What was the original house? When we first, we first discussed this in July, what was total square footage that was originally the first?
The very first time? Yeah, it was, uh, year thirty-two, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it was approaching thirty-three hundred.
Yeah.
It's over the max. Thirty-three hundred two.
Thirty-three ninety-two? Approaching thirty-four.
Yep.
Do you have the front elevation on it?
The original?
The very original, the very original. I've got all three sets, what we've done.
It's remarkable to me how the house now aligns with the look that the zone called for, and I knew it when I saw it. And I know that it has been incredibly difficult to get here, but I'm so glad that we're here. It is gorgeous.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Could, could I see the most recent elevation of the floor? Once the floor is done, I am.
This is what we are presenting tonight.
The, the last month's, I guess, elevation.
The middle one.
The middle one, yeah, the middle elevation.
Sorry, sorry.
From the October meeting, yeah.
That is missing.
Yeah, nothing was changed from the front. Now, look. Do you wanna?
We have reduced everything in the back on this.
Really pushed a little bit back.
Yeah, correct. And, and what we have done now is we've removed this portion here, decreased this, and then created a hip roof on the porch as well. So the hip here sort of aligns with the hip on this side, and it flows to the house.
Yeah.
We've also pushed this section and this section back two feet, and this one, that's an additional five.
The hard thing that was done, like the removal of the square footage that exists on the first floor to give you enough room for the second, to make it all work, but aesthetically, it is, it's, it's work.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's work.
Yeah, we have lost items that the owners were looking for, but it, it doesn't.
I understand five hundred square feet is not a small amount of square footage, and, uh, there's six hundred square feet is what you've come down in total. I wanna ask you about the notations on the plans. I see a lot of really nice architectural detail. I really like the standing seam roof. Is the proposal and the application, um, coming along with a commitment to actually make all of these aesthetic detail part of this plan?
Yeah. That one next, well, yes, right, all right, yeah. Next, whatever. It's easy for me to say, it's the owner that has to do it, but yes.
So we'll represent that the, the architectural details as shown on the plans revise through November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. The applicant will construct.
Now, there is still one item that was brought up on Mr., uh, uh, on Jordan Rizzo's, uh, letter. Um, and that is regards to windows, square footage, and the percentage to the elevation. But I created another, um,
Manifestation?
Uh, exhibit, yeah, another exhibit to show where the square footages are and the verified that we have met the square footages that we need and how we will meet on one, if, uh, let's, let's hand it out first, so.
Mr. Rizzo, was there a particular elevation you were?
Yeah, there's, there's two. So there's the front elevation, which is over the side. It's on, uh,
It's on Willow.
I see.
The north, the north elevation was the top sheet of what I'm handing out. Um, I guess this would be A.
Yes, the south.
So Chairman, board members, for the record, the revision is intended to address, uh, Mr. Rizzo's comment, uh, from his letter of November twenty-sixth, comment four B on, as in Bravo, on page four. The Willow Street front elevation and southern side elevation, so north and south essentially, have been revised to eliminate windows from the previous plan. Demonstrate compliance with section thirty dash seven point seven D as a delta, which requires that each side of the house contain at least four percent of windows. Alternatively, if the applicant cannot comply, a variance would be required. The applicant is not seeking any further variances, Chairman.
We'll go through how, how we're gonna do it. Uh, and I, I've gone over this, well, with Jordan on the, on the phone, so, uh, I just wanted present it to you to make sure everybody is okay with what we're looking to do. On the, the north elevation, which is the Willow side elevation, currently, the square footages, uh, of the elevation or what you would see highlighted in yellow on the sheet that I presented is, uh, six hundred and seventeen point six square feet. We currently have one window on this elevation, which is eleven point five square feet, and there are going to be windows within the garage door. Now, to be on the conservative side, a typical garage door panel is two feet, so I assumed a one foot two window by three foot six long. There will be four of them total in the door. That would add up to an additional, uh, twenty-seven point, I'm sorry, sixteen point four square feet, which would get us four point five percent of this elevation.
Thereby meeting the four percent requirement on this north elevation.
That is correct. And windows in the garage door, um, what I've been told, you count as part of the windows.
With regard to the first floor, it would seem as that our best, there would be room somewhere on the porch, but then on the second floor, there's, there's, there's a reason that you haven't added any windows on that second floor? You've got backs of closets?
You have, you have these two roofs coming directly, or this gable roof or hip roof coming directly into the side of the house. So the only place I can put it would be in the corners here and here. This is complicated by chimney.
Okay.
These are both closets that are already there, and I've already added a window in the front and back of the house to the, the, the more prominent elevations. So there are already windows in the closet. There's no reason to put an additional window in the closet. And at the very center, in this area right here, where I couldn't fit one, is where, where you probably want, and that's the bathroom, that's where the toilet actually is, and I would love to put one over it, but because of the roof, there is no room to fit a window in that location.
Okay, what about south?
South elevation. Again, the yellow, um, the exhibit that I presented to you is the actual elevation. Of the walls, and that adds up to six hundred and eighty-nine point one square feet. Currently, we are showing one window on this elevation right now, which is in the primary bedroom. Um, and that is fourteen point nine square feet, so we technically are at two point one six percent. But what we will do, um, if the board, uh, perceives an approval on this, uh, we would make a condition of approval. We will add a second window to the master suite, um, in the opposite corner, so that the bed would be sitting between the two windows, the next stand will be under the window. That would bring us to, uh, a grand total of four point three two percent. So we would have nothing as a variance on that side. We'll just add a second window here.
And, and on the first floor, that's your media wall in the great room?
First floor, there's two built-in bookshelves on either side of the fireplace at this point in this room. And on this end, it is the, uh, guest bedroom and the bathroom. The bathroom is the shower on that end, so it really is not, uh, prudent to go window in the shower. Um, and at this end here, there's already a big window in the front. This is the only wall to put the bed on in that bedroom. Uh, it doesn't make sense to put a window over the bed.
And the window that you're proposing to put on the second floor in the master doesn't complicate your floor layout?
It does not.
Spot. Exactly. Good spot. The south elevation has a little stark.
Again, that is the elevation that is facing directly to the neighbor's house. So typically, you try not to put the windows.
Yeah, fair enough.
So I, I'm just gonna throw it out because I, I hadn't really focused on it until now that we're looking at it. Um, is there a way to use any, um, siding detail in the elevation that faces Willow in order to create some visual interest? I'm specifically thinking of a triangular pattern or something to create something other than the, the stark siding above the garage on the second floor?
Uh, again, because of the push and pull in the house and the way the house actually lays out, you can see it in the second rendering that we provided. It is a very good view of that end of the house. You really don't see it. I mean, this is a true, the way you're looking at the house straight on. You never actually look at a house straight on. You're never looking at it in this elevation. You're always gonna see it in perspective. You're always gonna see it from eye level, which is significantly lower down here. This really isn't visible.
Okay, look, I, I certainly don't feel strongly about it, but I would just throw out there that as you're looking at it, you might wanna do something to just make that a little more interesting, and, but I think your point is well taken. This is shown at a mid-level, you're gonna be a ground level. I don't think it's a big deal.
And we do try to accentuate that with details such as the kubel at the top, as well as all the brackets that we'd be putting on down here, and it's just, the little details add a lot.
Really nice.
Did you get dimensions on the kubel two?
Kubel is three foot ten by three foot ten by five foot two tall to the, the actual top of the.
Does the kubel account towards your penetration on that elevation?
I did not add it in.
It wasn't included, no. So that's, that technically would be more if you wanted. Can you, um, just add those dimensions on to the revision?
Absolutely.
You find. Instead, um, three foot ten by three foot ten by?
Five two.
Mr. Rizzo, do you have anything further?
Um, at this point, I really just have a few more technical comments on, in my letter, it's implied, would you agree with all those? The main one being the dimension of the neighborhood to the south. I understand that you're removing portion of your house, or I think it's getting better.
Yes, it's twenty-five four currently, and we are taking a three foot nine off the house.
So if you're gonna show me, I can mention, it's gonna be a survey dimension. Um, just so that in the future, it's on the project plan, they acknowledge that.
We'll circulate to that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that stipulation?
It's, it's really just to address the comments in my letter, um, but this one is specifically five C, it's the setback to the principal structure on the adjacent property.
Twenty-five foot, twenty-five foot separation between the two structures.
There are just money that like apply.
Increasing.
To show it on the plan. And we'll, we'll provide that on the plan. I don't have anything further.
How about you, Mr. Higgins?
I have nothing further, Chairman. Board members, we had entered, um, Mr. Gudak's testimony with the Department of Development, who's, there are fewer variances, so we stand by that testimony.
Great. Any members of the public have any questions or comments with regard to the uh, good one application? Almost, okay. Anything in closing, Mr. Higgins?
Uh, other than to thank the board for the opportunity to refine the plan and come up with something, uh, that obviously is very complimentary to this zone and the requirements, uh, bulk-wise, as well as the traditional standards of floor area and, um, habitable, uh, maximum habitable floor area, lot coverage and building coverage. Thank you.
Scott? Um, it's a beautiful house.
Thank you.
Uh, the previous one, just visually, I know this isn't part of what we do, you know, we're dealing with these setbacks and, and floor areas and things like that, but there's something visually that hung me up. It, it, um, it, it, it's somewhere along the left-hand side of the building, it just, it looked like a large block. And, um, and I'm just struck by how bringing the floor area ratio into compliance seems to have brought it visually into what I feel really does complement the rest of the neighborhood here. You know, we discussed a lot how um, how visible this house is to the town because of its location. Um, and how the, the way that area is zoned and the, the houses that are in the neighborhood changes on one side of Willow significantly to these smaller two-story, almost cottage-sized houses. Um, on the other side of Willow, um, you know, much larger but older houses. And on this stretch of oak, um, more of the remaining ranches from the original development there, but some that have been renovated and expanded, um, without really going up a full two stories with those, um, sort of floating um, second-story additions that are, that are narrower than, than the rest of the house. Um, and I think this, uh, This new plan is uh. I just am, I'm surprised and happy about the way that bringing it into the floor area ratio. Brought it um just aesthetically into into the neighborhood really well. Looks it's hard for me to explain. I guess that that's. That's what I'm saying.
I I had a question, I I recall it, I'm sorry, I'm out of procedure with the question, but we had some discussion about a tree. At the southwest corner, is that tree gonna be remade now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's the reason why on the last application, we'd actually pulled everything.
Right, we pulled that notch in, I wasn't sure with the new procedure, but that's fine.
Bill would remain unfortunate, a tree is it's a four foot ten round or four foot diameter. So it is a big tree, um but it's only a few feet off the corner to the house, so it is already. By us pulling it back, actually, you can root a little bit more into it.
First, congratulations. You started very early in the pregnancy and now. But you know, it's been a process, and there's a lot of correlations here, it's been a process, but I think the end result is something that. Um, you know, we could. I mean, to to what Al said, I mean, thi- this design is fantastic and. Uh, for the piece of property in the town, it is, you know, very visible area of the town, I mean, I think. You know, from the beginning to the end, I think we're we're at a much better goal all around. Um, and I think as you live in a house, you're gonna come to appreciate the bigger porch. Some of the artistic designs, and we really appreciate the trade-offs that you did. To bring it within compliance, um so I have, uh, I mean, I could not be more enthusiastic about the the this final product. And again, congratulations.
Thank you.
And tell your wife. We're the best. And the baby. Maybe Kevin?
Yes.
How big?
Nine pounds, one ounce. First time on public fire. Second time.
We're not getting footprints up.
I agree with everything you guys said. I think I think you did a great job. I really, I I love the proportionality of it all. Symmetrical, um given where it sits on the lot. I mean, this is exactly why we do what we do and I. Um, I think it's great for the town. I have people coming up to me saying like, I've been following, you know, such and such and. And they just, they really appreciate when all the effort comes together and something like this comes out of it, so I think it's great and um. Congratulations.
Anything else?
No. Well, I I certainly, Mr. Rizak, I I wanna thank you. I I think you did a terrific job guiding them. I certainly wanna thank the applicant, Mr. Rags. I think you've done a great job, the whole team, in figuring out what what made sense. I also think that when we look at this. Relative to what these requirements are, we see um. Why they are what they are, but there there's a lot of architectural effort here um to make it work. There's a lot of tricks that you're employing. And they're all working really, really well. Um, so with that, I'll make a motion um to approve.
The good one advocate, um the uh. Uh, the uh, the approval will be based on the truth and accuracy of the record. Um, it will be based on the condition that we're gonna add the window as discussed to the south side elevation. I wonder if there's anything else, right?
There's a stipulation. About.
Stipulation with regard to the notes on the plans relative to the architectural details, the standing scene roofs, the uh the bracketing and the trim detail. Um, the shutters and. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
And congratulations again and again.
I was most emotional, I was the most emotional.
The softer side about.
No, I knew exactly what you're saying. I told him.
I will see you next year, yes.
It's not like the standard farmhouse thing, riff on it.
See you next year.
See you next year.
My friend's getting awarded, and it's actually the anniversary of my anniversary of year. Have to raise a flag for that.
Big award, big award. The entire year?
Yes. The greater from since Fairhaven ever.
Oh, no, no, I had a COVID era.
It was two years ago, so we're in the.
Thought you just got the lizard in your trunk for a year and they're like.
How dare you?
All right, Mr. Rags, we're ready for you for Gil.
All right. So also, can we confirm jurisdiction on this matter? Jurisdiction has been confirmed. Are there anything preliminarily by way of lawyer reasons? Cooler Jordan socks, Jordan's ugly really cool socks.
Thanks. Take some of my eyes, please. They both match.
Well done.
Thanks, there's a. No, there's actually two more. Um, there's seven total checklist waivers were received. Um, four of them are the standards, there's three uh outside. Freehold so conservation district, uh Monmouth County Health Department. And then any easements covered in skis. Which would be provided if it was applicable. Um, one of them is providing one of the checklists itself, um to exception to because. I printed it and filled it out. Original signed and sealed survey with raised seal. I received a PDF copy of this to scale. So I would ask that at a later date, that be submitted to the apparel's file.
No objection to make that a conditional approval, Mr. Rags?
No objection.
And then the last one would be the the draft notice. I don't personally think so.
I I I think we're good, we we confirm that we have jurisdiction. Leave it, take a look at the notes, I think it's gonna impact what. Supply a copy.
A copy and a note, sure.
Please. Okay.
Would you like that now?
Sure. You can take care of time.
All right, this is my only, this, I mean, would you like to see it? This is my only version. The original.
I I'm sure, I'm not sure I have seen Mr. Riz's got, did you not, or? What would you, what would you issue with nerves?
I don't have an issue with it. With the initial application.
We're good.
We're good, we're good, thank you.
Yeah, sure, very well. Uh, I'd like to mark the following exhibits uh as A one, the land development application checklist. And zoning board adjustment application part three is A one. Architectural site plans, floor plans and elevation, three sheets last advised to July sixteen twenty twenty four is A two. Uh, image of survey of property, one sheet prepared by Charleston E. Bell dated May tenth. Uh, twenty twenty one unrevised A three. Uh, zoning permit denial prepared by zoning officer dated June twenty fifth twenty twenty four, that will be A four. Uh, zoning board adjustment resolution dated September seventh twenty twenty, sorry. Two thousand one. I marked A five. Color photographs, but excuse me, colored images of the subject property, undated. Uh, four images, A six. Uh, we have the. CME report of October fourth twenty twenty four over the signature of Jordan Rizzo, the ZB one. EB two will be the CME report of November twenty sixth twenty twenty four. Those are all of the exhibits that I have at this time, if there will want to be any more. You can just mark it as we go along. You're up to A seven as your next one.
A seven as the next one, I concur. Thank you very much, Mr. Kovat. So Chairman, Board Members, Mark Akins on behalf of the applicant, Melissa and Raymond Gill the third. Um, ladies and gentlemen, this is a circa nineteen fifties uh existing single family residence at two hundred Oxbury Avenue with attached garage. Um, after Mrs. Gill reside in the residence with their three children, and they propose a covered front porch. With interior renovations to the first and second floors. And um modest additions to increase the number of bedrooms from three to four. Uh, these additions are largely within the existing footprint. Front yard setback is presently non-conforming the resolution that was referred to as A five. Notes that the setback in two thousand. One, September seventh two thousand one was at twenty feet plus or minus or thirty feet is required, so that was established some time ago. Um, we're proposing uh with our porch to be at nineteen feet, six inches. Um, the depth of that porch, incidentally, is six feet front to back, so it's not a terribly deep porch. Um, there's another variance um that's proposed for the air conditioning units. Today, they are non-conforming at five point five feet. We propose to move them farther away from the side yard, uh so thereby mitigating the existing non-conformity from five point five to six point two feet. Um, in addition, because the front yard area for the driveway and sidewalks is greater than twenty five percent. At thirty eight percent proposed, that is technically a variance as well. I think what's significant for this application is, and and again, this is a lot that's almost nine thousand square feet in the R seven point five. So the key metrics here in the borough, right, FAR, maximum habitable floor area. Lot coverage and building coverage were all well within those four parameters, which I think is is significant. Also, for the board's consideration this evening, is that while the maximum height of a structure in the R seven point five is thirty feet. We're at twenty two point eight, so we're well below from a massing standpoint. The the massing that's allowed in the R seven point five. So with me this evening, uh in addition to the Gil, should the board have any questions for them? Or uh i- is Anthony Condurus, a licensed and registered architect in the state of New Jersey?
Anybody's gonna testify, step forward.
Question steps up. Just in case.
Just in case. All solemn swear, Israel, right hands, you all solemn swear the testimony. For this board will be the truth, all truth, all truth, all truth.
Yes.
My usual instruction, when you start testifying, before you say anything, you state your name, spell your last name for the day.
Thank you. Mr. Rags?
Yes.
This resolution. Regarding the Tunys, the former owners of the property.
Yes.
Two thousand and one?
Yes.
What does it do? What was, what what happened here? So it was to enlarge uh to extend a rear dormer and to enlarge an existing bedroom. In the rear front? I I I don't, I don't know.
It says, it says rear.
Well, there is no dormer in the front now. Extend a rear dormer to enlarge an existing bedroom forty seven square feet, so it sounds like. If if you consider those together, then it sounds like there was an existing bedroom that was enlarged via a rear dormer in the rear of the structure. So a- am I reading this as other people are reading this, that there were no new variances created by whatever modification happened in two thousand and one? And this was simply a matter of uh moving through pre-existing non-conformities? It seems uh the conclusion, one of the conclusions reached, Chairman, is that the existing non-conformity will not be affected presumably the front yard setback. The premises will general generally be in conformity with the surrounding premises. Okay, now with regard to the front yard setback, which wasn't in compliance in two thousand and one. Um, you are proposing to effectively hold the existing line with regard to what is the current setback?
I'm gonna let Mr. Condurus uh show that graphically in his uh. In his drawings as well as testify to it, if that's okay.
All right, so we're gonna fiddle with the front, I I wanna understand exactly what the variances are that are triggered. You talked about what you didn't need. And the the fact that you weren't pushing up against some of the things we see a lot of, but tell, I know you need something for the driveway.
Driveway, the air conditioning units, which we're in improving. All right, can I just clarify that real quick? Um, yes, they are improving, they're switching sides of the house also. So currently, they're on the north side, they'll be switched to the south side. Setback is slightly increased.
Okay, so so front driveway lock coverage. Uh, uh. Air conditioning compressors.
And the porch in the front.
Got it.
That's it.
Thank you.
Yes, we don't know if the porch is changing that much, Rex, this is twenty plus or minus.
Yeah, six, yeah, six inches, six inches theoretically.
Well, it's gonna be exacerbated laterally though.
Yes, side to side, yes.
So today, if you wanna refer to page uh seven in my letter, there's a photo in front of the house. Um, the measurement in existing conditions is to the railing. Okay. So that we don't find your setback is probably more than.
Yes, twenty five.
Yes. No, 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 I mean, the the railing sits proud of the of the step.
Is that a real number, Mr. Rags, twenty five?
Twenty five, twenty seven.
On the nose to the house itself, I think that's what.
So the plus or minus twenty feet, that's, it's not shown, but that's to the uh the ramp.
Yeah. If everyone does look at page seven of Mr. Rizzo's letter that that shows you the front elevation. And maybe that's a good place for Mr. Condurus to to start. Would you like me to place his credentials on the record?
No, we'll stipulate on Mr. Condurus.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anthony Condurus, C O N D O U R I S. So if you look at the site plan, uh and look at the the building, uh you'd see that there's various rectangles that are hatched, uh and that is. Those are the areas of the house that are actually being expanded, so it's it's an existing. Kind of a hybrid Cape house, um it has, the upstairs have a very awkward layout, it's got sloped ceilings. There's a very low dormer in the front. Uh, not a lot of hammering and a lot of spots, so um the homeowners, you know, didn't wanna do a major second floor addition, we just. Basically did a lot of tweaks to try to get a little more space upstairs and push out a couple of blocks to uh to create more bearing space. So. Uh, the only actual expansion of the footprint is happening. Uh, in the page two. Uh, the first floor plan, the only expansion of footprint from a building standpoint is was the mudroom that was uh adding to the back of the garage. Other than that, everything stays on top of the footprint of the house. Uh, so. In the other brick floor, you'll see we have an attached garage. Uh, there's a, there's one bedroom on the first floor. And um. There's a bathroom and a bedroom in the rear. So for the first floor, we just kind of moved some walls around. Changed the pitch around a little bit to to get more room. Uh, and of course, the mudroom uh behind the garage allows them to have laundry. This house does not have a basement, it's on the crawl space. Uh, if you look at the second floor. Again, it's, I I realize it's a little bit of a confusing floor plan, but uh. In the rear of the house, you'll see that we expanded this one area in the back to create that third bedroom on the second floor. This front bedroom uh right now has a very low ceiling. If you look in the photos, there's a dormer that comes down, you know, top layer. Work with pipe, so there we just picked up the front of the house. Uh, you'll see on the east elevation here, um that's the front. Uh, we we took that shed dormer and put a a gable dormer on top of it. Uh, and we didn't go all the way up on the side sides of the walls, we still kept it low profile because we are maintaining the existing height of the house. So I think this is a very low scale, very subtle change that we made here.
And that's still at twenty two feet?
Still at twenty two feet, yeah, uh twenty two, ten plus or minus, yeah. Um, and then next to that new gable that we put on is is a shed dormer that we expanded over. Uh, to give room to that, to the master, which if you go back to. The second, I'm sorry, not the master, the master's in the rear, um. I'm sorry, there's. There's four bedrooms upstairs.
Take your time.
Yeah.
Don't be quick, be thorough, it's okay.
So um the front bedroom has, this front section has the very low ceiling, I, the roof just comes down and there's a, there's a short needle, so we picked up that. That room there. And that's why you have this expanded shed dormer.
Let me go back to Mr. Chesney's question, if you could pull back the sheet that shows the first floor, could you discuss the width of the porch?
Yes.
We we established the depth at six feet, right?
Mr. Rags, I was gonna say, it's gonna take blows with Mr. Condurus to present.
Yeah, so the the.
Sorry, could you trace it for the board? Just trace it with your finger.
Oh, the dimension is a column in the way, can you see it or? Yeah, it's it's out six feet and it's nineteen foot four inches wide.
Okay.
So it it goes across the.
It's a little less than a hundred and twenty square feet.
Right, okay. And it's just a quantifier. And it ties in with the with the roots line above it and uh it's kind of balancing out. I think the porch is an attractive addition to the house, uh rather than just having a front door.
And it's essentially all this one elevated platform, the whole thing is a step down and there's no running.
It does not require any running.
But the whole, the whole thing is essentially the step down.
Yes. Yes.
What's going on there? It's not right from that, that one long slash.
It's of the porch?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually, it's about six inches size. I stopped it for a second because it probably will require a step, but we will recess it into the porch to maintain the front setback that way.
It's trying to, it's maybe just the way I'm looking at it. What's the dimension of bedroom two?
I want to come back to the porch. Why don't we talk about?
No, also to the porch, this is, this is your lady.
On the porch? So I I want to talk about the porch because six feet is absolute bare minimum.
Yeah.
And dropping a step into the porch creates potential for a dangerous condition. Are you only proposing to do that because you don't want to ask for a variance?
Well, actually, you wouldn't need a variance, right? Because you get the first, that's what I just, you get the first six inches.
Well, no, but the actual overhang of the porch is technically the measure in this case.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Oh, goes the over.
It it goes to the the furthest feature.
Above. Okay.
That's six inches high. So you'd a railing, it'd be that, it's a covered porch, the porch itself.
So the roof overhang is gonna be counted within the setback?
It's over the porch.
Well, the setback's thirty feet. So the whole thing is inside of the.
Exactly.
And when you're exacerbating it in any direction, both horizontally, laterally, it's all going to be. You're gonna need it regardless. Are, would you, would you prefer a step in front?
Yes, a hundred percent.
Okay.
So in that case, it would be the face of the second.
The second riser.
Right.
Which would be the face of the porch.
So there's no, there's no separate second riser. That's the porch itself.
Correct.
Just so everybody understands, the the minute you drop that step back, you've you've got on both sides, you've got a a trip hazard going down and in. You've only got six feet. And by the time you add those columns, you're gonna have five or less, right? You've got, you have railings?
Yeah, no, no railings.
No, well, okay, so so that's good. So it'll be usable. But I I really feel like it cut me too thin to push that step back.
Why do you need a step if it's six inches? How how high are your steps?
No, there'll be, there'll be one one tread in front of the porch, which normally doesn't count in the setback, although the whole thing is in the setback, I guess. So that's the issue.
No, I'm just saying from a vertical standpoint, if the platform itself is six inches.
No, the platform, no, it's six, it's about sixteen inches.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
I I thought I heard six inches.
Oh, I, yeah, okay. That's it. So so let's throw a little fast, tap the brakes for a second. So let's reach, let's regroup. So from the existing grade to the top of the porch floor, that's sixteen inches.
I I can give you a more accurate number if you want.
Would you scale it? Yes, please. Just let's let's have our record be thorough. Try to do that. Thank you.
The the six inch range in the front elevation looks as though there's almost a bite out of the front yard to place that second step down in. But your grade's higher to the left. It it, I I could imagine it only being six inches above the existing grade from there.
Yeah, it doesn't look that high. That's fine.
Let's just get it accurate. I don't, I don't think that it's material. I I, you're not asking for a lot, but you're fair enough.
Right. Well, you know, our drawings, sometimes we don't have the grades shown accurately, so.
I'm looking at this photo, Mr. Aikens. I don't know what this is in your package, but tell me if you love it. A six. You've only got two steps as it is, and it looks like that one dropped and that's all flat across. So I I don't know if that's.
Right, so yeah, there's two ridges here, about six or seven inches each.
Yeah.
Yes. So and that's all we would need. If we had to add something, we would only need one.
So basically.
One ride.
It's like the grade's almost level with the first drizz.
Yeah, it dropped, right.
Exactly.
Comes down, right?
Can you give us the height? Why don't we just start back?
Yeah, could you, could you scale off the height between
I can, I can.
Existing grade and the proposed.
Right. Top of the.
Keeping in mind that the existing grade does sort of slope up as you move to the left here.
Well, to take, take the lowest spot. I think that's what we're concerned about.
So, yeah, in front of where the porch is, the way it is, where you see it on the plan, we're at about fifteen inches.
Fifteen?
From the lowest grade.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then if you had one step at seven and a half, that bridges the gap between top of the porch floor and the existing grade. And we're not proposing to change the existing grade in the front yard, right?
No, no. And what, and what's the average depth of the tread? Do you, do you think? Nine and a half is the minimum, but probably ten, it'd probably be ten. Okay, so that's just, so whatever that number is on here, it's just gonna come out by that. Okay, alright. For ten inches.
So chairman, does that, does that answer the questions with regard to the porch dimensions and the the potential configuration of the porch?
Yeah, the 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 balance of the porch is intended to be in line with what is currently the top stoop?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're close to nine straight.
Okay. Do we want to go back to the dimension of the bedroom?
There's a question, it's just a question. It's very small, I mean, I'm reading it.
Oh, yes, they are, they are fairly small bedroom.
Could you scale that off for the porch then?
Yes. The front, you're talking about the front bedroom?
No, the bedroom, number two is nine six by.
Bedroom number two is eleven six by nine foot six.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just couldn't read the numbers.
So the existing square footage is bottom. I can't read this too soon.
This square footage is nineteen seventy, one thousand nine hundred and seventy.
And what's the outpost?
Proposed is twenty three eleven.
Where is, where's all that square footage exactly? I know you've got a mudroom, but it isn't that big, is it?
There is all that square, well, you know, when when we looked up, we added volume to the house up on the second floor.
But but the way that we're measuring now, are you, is it the eighteen inches and you were excluding it on the existing and now you're coming up? So now it's coming in?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
But but everything is within the existing perimeter, short the mudroom in the back?
That is correct.
Okay.
But you you, it it's the area, area to the bedroom two, the mudroom, and then the second floor addition, the primary bedroom is in addition.
That is.
That's new square footage.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but not really.
No, no, no.
Because they have, they're current, it's currently existing with a roof that comes way down.
Oh, right, right.
Just the dorm, uh, just the dormer. Other than the primary bedroom, it's just the dormer. It's increasing the volume.
So why don't we walk the board through, it's the doors, while we walk the board through each area of the house that adds to the square footage that gets us from nineteen seventy to twenty eleven?
I think the best place to end, I might do a little bit of comparison there to that, but on page one, bottom left, you have your actual diagram.
So how we walk, can't read it, but says how we do.
Yeah, on the lower left of page B one, you'll you'll see, when you jump, when you go from existing to proposed, you second floor diagrams that are right on top of each other. You can see that we we added that better, the primary bedroom.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Above that one story section.
Exactly.
Yes.
That's new.
But that's within the, it's within the footprint.
Within the footprint, but that's new second floor scrims.
Correct. So so the mudroom's like ninety seven square feet, it looks like, here? Right? And then the most of it's on the second? Yes. Okay, yes. So it's just under three hundred on the second floor and just under one hundred on the first floor? Right, ninety seven to ninety six square feet respectively, about three hundred and two hundred and ninety six. But I didn't, yeah, it'll be, you're you're close, yeah.
Yeah, it's right, yeah. Alright, be a little pricey. Three variances, front yard setback with regard to the porch, right?
Yes.
Just talk about it. Talk about the driveway, talk about the compressors.
Yes. So the compressors, we're moving those from side to side?
That's correct, yes.
And and do we have an enhanced side yard setback to begin with for this property, right? Sixteen is required and we're at nineteen and change?
For a total?
For a total?
Yes, about nineteen for a total.
And we have sixty two and a half feet of frontage where sixty feet is required in the R seven five, right?
Right.
Okay. And we got extra depth too, right? We're one forty three where one hundred is required in the R seven five?
Yes, correct. One hundred is the depth required. We're at one forty three.
Why are we locating? I I understood you saying that we move one side to the other.
We were trying, we were trying to improve the condition. And they have, they have, they have a walkway on the side there. It's, it's in the way.
Okay, what about moving it to the back? If you're gonna spend money to move it, why not move it to the back?
Well, you you wind up putting it in the usable area of the backyard here, the the, you were trying to get them away from the rear of the house. So yes, we could have moved it to the back, but it was more desirable to put them on the side. We thought we'd be proving that.
I wouldn't want them in the back. It's just more bad.
Is there another space that can be moved to on the same side without, so the walkways more usable without? Uh, on the, on the side where they are now? Yeah, the side where they're currently, it's just, it's absurd. No, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to avoid the the walkway anywhere, anywhere along that wall. Okay, okay, yeah, I see.
And that's where the mudroom, so it makes it even narrower there.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I see it on the survey. It's just pretty small.
So I'm gonna draw a driveway, so, right, driveway, the front walk.
Right, so the we are short on the the percentage that you would need for the, well, we need three parking spaces that are supposed to be behind the front seven. We can't meet that condition the way, the way that the driveway, the, we have one spot in the garage, but the driveway itself is in front of the front center.
Is it just the parking? Or is the driveway covers the percentage?
Is the, the variance is the percentage, the waiver is the parking.
Okay, so, alright, I got the waiver. Let's talk about the percentage of the cost.
So we're not, Mr. Condurus, we're not adding to the size of the driveway.
We're not.
They're just not.
It's a factor, no, it's a factor of the front yard shrinking.
So in this.
Because of the porch.
Yeah, the front, the front yard shrinks, so your denominator is shrinking.
Right.
It presently conforms? And I don't, I don't live presently conforms, but it's getting worse. So it's it's driveway area over front yard area, front yard area being everything in front of the house.
How how much driveway do we have? I can't tell, even on the survey, there's.
It's twenty six, seven by, I don't know what the width is.
That's the depth?
The depth is twenty six, seven.
I'm gonna ask the Gills if they might know approximately what the depth of, what the width of the garage is, excuse me, the width of the driveway is?
It's eighteen feet, yeah.
I see nine, five, but that's not double, that's only one inch.
You know, it's indicating approximately eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet, we can mark two cars and not proposing to change it at all. It's the existing condition, the condition's being exacerbated with the fact that we're losing front yard.
Not not proposed to be changed at all. It's 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 buffered on each side by block curving. No change proposed.
You agree with here's comments, it's simply a factor of decreased front yard.
It it's purely because of the porch. No, that's the only reason. Right. Right, there's, there's no other reason for the variance, right?
I have other questions, just in my letter. Survey we received is dated twenty twenty one. You just represented, if that survey is, it remains accurate and nothing else is getting installed.
Yes, and I've got, the one that I'm looking at is actually sealed now, so I can provide that as part of the record as well. Just referring to it in the presentation, but I'm happy to leave it, Mr. Kovat, as part of the.
It's fine.
Yep. This one's sealed. Yeah.
It's something come up too often, but the ordinance requires sidewalk on front inch ball properties. And it also goes on to explain that the borough engineer will review the affordability ultimately, potentially calculated the fee or so I would ask that you just contact the borough engineer, see if that would be.
We'll make that contact, Mr. Rizzo, and if he requires the contribution in lieu of the sidewalk, we'll make the contribution consistent with the ordinance.
There's no sidewalk on the side of the street?
No sidewalk on the side of the street.
No, sir. And then
we want to have it just from this out.
Yeah, right.
I'll do that.
And then have you considered installing drywall at all?
So we have some testimony on that, and Mr. Condurus, can you review the?
Yeah, so right, so currently, we didn't do any excavating to see what's there. But there are two on on the garage, on the corner, on the front corner of the existing garage and the rear part of the existing garage, there are two gutters that go into a pipe that we don't know where it goes. On the opposite side of the house, there's just leaders that go to the anyway. So we we can review, try to turn whatever's down there and figure out if we need to add anything or.
We can connect the other two and find out what's, we don't know exactly what's there. We we didn't install them, but apparently the two leaders on the north side, they go to some kind of an underground facility. The two leaders on the south side do not. So we can see if we can connect them and find out what we've got there with further investigation. But there is some kind of a system there presently, Chair.
That that investigation alone might cost you a percentage of what it will cost you to put in a drywall. Is there, is there room and a desire to install a drywall in the rear to take the lead of water and put it underground?
If if the, if the board wants that to be done, we could certainly do it.
The the increase in building coverage here is is the front porch and it's the the mudroom. Everything else would be above here.
Right.
So that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, the mudroom is actually above an existing slate patio, so there's no no.
We know.
No previous increase.
Do we know if there are any drainage issues currently or any standing water, anything like that?
We're not aware of any, no. We're ten, no, no. And and again, you know, in terms of some of the the metrics that I referred to in my, in my opening, you know, maximum building coverage here is thirty five percent. We're going to, from seventeen to nineteen and change, so we're we're well below that. In terms of maximum lot coverage, forty five percent is the max, we're going from thirty two to thirty three five. So here again, as I shared in my opening remarks, you know, we're well below these traditional metrics in variation zone ordinances. If the board requires it, certainly we'd we'd do it, but we think it's a de minimis increase overall.
It is.
Sorry, it is.
It's, I can't always say that.
It's objectively true.
But it's nice to say. Nice to be able to say.
My personal take, I don't think it's a bit of an increase to one. The price, my, I don't either, but.
Alright.
And then will you just address the balance of my technical comments? One of those was providing the survey, which was already agreed to.
Yes.
The others be discussed verbally.
We have no problem stipulating to those, Mr. Rizzo, consistent with your letter of November twenty six, two thousand twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further, Chair?
Nothing further, Chair.
Anything further from the board? Okay, any members in the public have any questions or comments regarding the application? Okay, anything closing?
Nothing closing, Chairman, other than thank the board for its consideration of the application of the Gil family.
I, I like getting drywells wherever we can get them. I don't think it's right to try to require them when an applicant has not proffered to do so. I don't feel that here. I think the front porch is important. I think that the front porch is appropriate. I think we should give them room for the step so that they can have use of all of it. It's so minimal. I don't have anything for you, and I think it's obviously a sound plan.
Yeah, I got nothing further to add. I think the plan visually is a big improvement of what's there in motion as well. And I agree with Mr. Leader, so long as we get the proper number for that front setback, can we give them the extra step and get it? It's only a six foot porch, so that extra step is gonna make a lot.
Mm-hmm, yep. I don't think that the driveway percentage is exacerbated because the front yard
shrinking.
Is not, well, it's shrinking, but only by that step.
Right.
But the percentage is, it's gonna be the same because they, what's that?
The six, you're you're adding six feet of porch on. The existing stoop is not six feet.
It's not, okay.
So whatever that dimension is, is what your front yard.
Like the percentage is not changing because, because the driveway is not getting wider. So everything in front of the front yard setback is the front yard. You're not changing the width of the driveway so so that the percentage can't change.
I I think that the delta between that being right and wrong is whether or not the measurement is from the front yard setback or from the setback requirement.
I believe I took it from the front of the house, not necessarily. We measured the front yard to the house.
It's okay. In the end, it doesn't matter. It's the front yard, which is the the portion of the front yard, the front yard is entirely in front of whatever the setback is. So as long as the width of the driveway doesn't change.
Yeah.
You're not changing the percentage. You're not changing the percentage, you're just shrinking the universe.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But no variance is triggered or?
Right, it's, it's. I'm gonna propose to clean it up.
Yeah.
Regardless, I think that the point is well taken, and I think if there was concerns about it, I think it might be material, but I don't think we have concerns. Anything else? Um no other motions.
I'll make a motion then to accept. The applicant, to approve the application as submitted, based on the truth and accuracy of the record, um we need to get the, the. Correct front yard setback though with that extra, with the extra step.
I mean, so it's nineteen point six now, um. We could say ten inches, we could say, but.
You could just say eighteen point six and then that gives us a little flexibility on the tread size.
Do you want to do the alternative to the extended? Uh here's what I would suggest. I would suggest that you go home, you sketch it, you send it in, and by the time you get to the resolution, we can write it down.
Sure.
The idea is that you're gonna have your six foot porch across the front, and you're gonna drop a step in front of that so that you get full use of the six feet. Your step should be what you feel like you need it to be. Don't make it nine and a half if you want it to be twelve.
Okay, thank you.
The condition on the submission of the.
I, I think that their motion is to approve it with the front yard setback at a number that'll be set at the time of the resolution to permit the step in front of the porch. What do you say?
Thanks. Um, Mr. Chesney?
Yes.
D'Angelo?
Yes.
And Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Mr. Shavani?
Yes. Yes. Thank you very much, ladies.
Congrats.
Thanks a lot.
Good evening.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Wow. Keep waiting for Ridgeway from IQ to say, yeah. He's at a snowdrift somewhere.
Oh, why did I leave?
Mr. Cal from the contract?
Yes. Uh, uh, yes, there's, yeah. Yeah, I'm overdone with it, I appreciate it. Yeah, it helps us to, and the place you wanted.
Oh, you saw it?
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, hoping along this. Possibly, that's a whole new house, it's, it's really long.
Alright, so we're just gonna ask you to just sort of add some quietly, Mr. Akins.
Um we only have one last thing, which is uh the discussion about the twenty twenty-three. For a year later. And your report, this report day, the clause you.
Yep, so. Marty and I actually spoke, it's one thing about it. We are, unless anyone has any other feedback, we got a lot of information from Sheila, just compiled a little more. We're gonna put something together. I think we're also going to just bang out plate twenty twenty-four one, right after this ends because. So we're so late into it anyway, today as well, and then it won't be hanging over our head.
That's terrific. That's a great idea.
Yes.
Quite bad, my life.
Yep, so we're gonna take care of that, um. And then, yeah, that's what we're gonna do, so Marty, uh Sheila, I think Marty's gonna reach out to you, um. For some of the other stuff to compile and we're gonna work on it and get a lot of the good data and. Hopefully get a really good, uh, really good report together, so. And then twenty twenty-four will be pretty much a breeze, honestly. Might as well just bang it out.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you're good.
So when you get that stuff together, I think that we should take and uh set some time on an agenda early twenty twenty-five.
To review?
To, no, no, to see what, what all that needs us to in terms of making some suggestions to the planning board.
Oh, I'll, I'll hear from you, yeah.
That'll give us a really good opportunity to focus on it.
I agree. Um Marty and I are gonna sit and try to draw some conclusions if there are any from the data, and then we can uh. We can report those as well, and I'll help if there's any, if there's any uh. Things like voting in districts or anything else we wanna.
And given the master comment, that it's gonna be, you know, our master panel viewers should say it's, right back there, the twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, yeah, that's great, that's great.
Okay, anything else?
Public comment?
Yeah, public comment?
What's up, Tracy?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we all.
Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Al's back a thousand times.
I was gonna say, Al was so moved by the design of that house. He was like, it's not even, everything's in the front yard.
But, so it, it wasn't even.
I know, I.
The line, it got me, it was just.
The, the wide universe of the wall coming together and supporting the better design, I know.
So, so think about it this way, right? So on one level, it is completely accidental and, and just happens to be. That it comes down to that number and with the design things, it feels and looks right, right? But on the other side, but on the other, it's obviously not, they're obviously targeting the number.
Yeah.
But on the other side of that, it shows you that it works.
It can be done.
It should research well when you came up with those numbers, and then when they conform to them, eliminate the variances. And you can't get to twelve hundred square feet on the second floor unless you remove space from the first floor, which is the problem with those ranches. They're roughly eighteen to two thousand square feet and you can't just add another story. You gotta get creative and, and you have to do the hard stuff, which is maybe pull out.
Well, you can't double it here, at least. You got some other places, you can slide another.
Not in this zone, and that was the problem.
Personally, I think it looks better, that the old was.
It looks better, it's a cornerstone piece, everyone sees it every day, it's gonna be beautiful. If they do the landscaping like that, it's, it's classy thing with the chim- they did a very nice job.
Yeah.
It really is very nice. Yeah, it's great. Um, you need a good architect for that, though. I mean, technically, it won't, it wouldn't work, but I mean, you could.
You could really.
He did a lot of things.
I mean, he did a very nice job.